Hello, everybody. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. Every year now, this is our eighth year, we've been doing a Business of the Year Award, and two years ago, we added a Business Person of the Year Award. And the goal is to recognize the businesses and the people that make Portland a great place to live and to work. And this year, I think, the two that were chosen are really exemplary of what businesses and business people have to offer for Portland. Our Business of the Year for 2014 was Portland Golf Course. And doing some research and on their history, it's really amazing what went into this. The course was started in 1972. And John and JT Kelly are here. Their dad started this, and it was not a lark. This was not something like, "I'm just going to build a golf course." The person that he hired to design it, Jeffrey Cornish, has received awards in the United States, in Canada, the United Kingdom. His golf courses are renowned, and in New England especially, there's people that just go out to play his courses. He utilized the hills that are in the Connecticut River Valley here, and really created a course that's fun, but still challenging, which is something that it's hard to find. Either a course is very hard, or it's very easy, and this comes from a really terrible golfer. So, I learned to play on Portland Golf Course, and one of the things that was wonderful about what they did was they really introduced to Portland and to the residents the idea that recreation as a business could coexist with the community here. And it was that idea that brought on two more golf courses, and now the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. In addition to that, what they had built around the golf courses is really a community of homes and neighbors that have held their value for these 40 years. And it's a neighborhood that's still sought after in Portland. Having the golf course here has offered two generations of students at Portland High School the opportunity to play golf as a sport. We've had numerous students that have gone on to earn regional, state, New England titles. They've gone on to college scholarships. They've gone on to careers in golf and the golf industry. That would have never happened without the golf course. One of the amazing things that I found is, in the 30-plus years that they have been sponsoring tournaments with different groups around not only Portland, but the county, they have raised millions of dollars. And where these dollars have gone and what they have done is really, truly amazing. Golf tournaments have included the Hospice Golf Tournament for Middlesex Hospital, the Middlesex County Chamber of Commerce Annual Tournament, which has been a sellout every year that they've had it since 1984, the Polish Legion of American Veterans Tournament, the Taft-Hartley Golf Tournament, and the Interfaith Golf Open, which is a partnership of St. Mary's Parish and Congregation of Death Israel. And the money that's been raised has gone to things as diverse as anti-bullying programs in schools throughout Middlesex County, Portland Youth and Family Service Programs, the Portland Food Bank, the Amazing Grace Food Pantry, Middlesex Hospital, summer youth employment programs, the Hal Kaplan Middletown Mentor Program, the Lorraine C. McHugh Scholarship Fund, that's given to a Middlesex County student attending any public university. And when I spoke with Larry McHugh at the Chamber, just to find out about how much money has been raised, he said, "The Chamber of Commerce has been holding their golf tournament here every year since 1984. They have always had a fantastic time working with Portland Golf Course and their staff, and have sold out every year, 144 golfers. Portland Golf Course has not only been a great supporter of our Chamber, but a fantastic corporate citizen for Middlesex County. One example, the Interfaith Golf Tournament in 2013 raised $65,000 in a single day." And it's so easy, and that's what everyone I spoke to said, "It's so easy. We call them up, say, 'We're going to do the tournament.' All they have to do is get the golfers and the prizes together. Everything is handled: food, making sure carts are ready, tee times." So, they just, they make it easy for these groups to be able to continue to do what they do. So, for all that Portland Golf Course and the Kelly family have done for Portland and Middlesex County over these last 40 years, I'm very proud to recognize them as Portland Economic Development Commission's 2014 Business of the Year. John and JT, would you like to come up? And Camilla Hank is a member of our Economic Development Commission.
So, on behalf of the town and the Portland Economic Development Commission, I want to present you with this plaque, and I want to thank you for everything that you and your family have done, and your commitment to Portland, and the future commitment of, I know, more generations of Kellys.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not a real good public speaker, but just very quickly, on behalf of JT and I,
I'd like to thank Mary and all her hard work, the Economic Development Commission, Susan Branson, Laura Sleckman, for supporting us, helping us, Kristi Carpinho, over the years. And I see that Lamafa's here, they know all about Portland, about opportunities. So, thank you very, very much. This is a great, great honor.
Don't walk away, because there's more. This is just our annual Community Partners Award, and you're, as usual, a gold member for all that you do for the community.
Thank you.
And our state representative, Kristi Carpinho, has something to present you with as well.
I just want you all to know that not only you wonderful partner, he's always been an asset to me. You're wonderful for the folks in Portland, but whenever I have a question, or there's an industry-type issue, he's my resident head. And I know that, and it's important. When I first got elected and I told people I represented Portland, a good majority of them had been to your course. And even still, when they say they're coming to Portland, coming to see you for any one of those tournaments, so thank you. It's the best part of my job is recognizing citizens and businesses that make home, what home really is meant to be. So, from Senator Linares, who's on his way, and to myself, and the entire General Assembly, congratulations on your recognition of being named Portland's Community Action Partner Business of the Year since your establishment in 1974. Of course, you served as a host to a myriad of tournaments, which has fostered Portland's diverse business climate. We highly commend your efforts and wish you the best if your business continues to grow in Portland community, both economically and creatively. And we wish you all the best, and thank you for all of your assistance. I have clubs, I have shoes, but I have Castle Life in Seattle. So, somewhere's lost. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Kristi, if you want to stay, we'll just do a quick picture that we can send in. Susan, do you want to come up as well?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, JT. Nice to see you. Picture time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we've begun picking a Business Person of the Year. And this was really done because there are a number of people in this town that, besides what they do for business, they very quietly work to make sure that this is really a place that other businesses want to come. They mentor other businesses, they make it a great place to live, they work with diverse group of programs. And so, this year, our choice was pretty easy for those of us on economic development, and our choice was Peter Lamafa. So, I've known the Lamafa family my whole life. I think you were my, Joan was my second-grade CCD teacher, and then also had my daughter. And then later on, in middle school, we had catechism classes at the house. My first job was at Glastonbury Bank, and Mr. Lamafa was upstairs in the real estate office, so I used to see him daily, and didn't know that I would come back full circle 30 years later to work with him on the Economic Development Commission. Pete actually came to work in Portland as a teenager. He became a barber at the age of 16, and it's probably not something that everybody remembers about him now, because we know him as a real estate agent and for all the work that he does around town. He served in the military and went to New Britain Teachers College, but teaching wasn't paying very well, as he said at the time, so he came back to work as a barber for his uncle Charlie Napoli here on Main Street. And in 1956, after Charlie died, Pete took over the shop, and it was named Pete's Barber Shop. And I had known the story that you had worked for your uncle, but I never knew why it was called Pete's. I just assumed that his uncle was Pete. And so, all these years, that shop was named for him. His brother Tony later came in to work for him, and when he decided to change careers at age 40, he opened the Lamafa Agency Realtors here on Main Street in Portland. So, he's worked on both sides of Main Street. He's helped so many Portland and area residents who wanted to be real estate agents launch their careers in real estate, both as an employer and a mentor, and has really exemplified fair and honest business practices. His staff has worked with many families over the years, helping them find the right house here in Portland, and then helping families sell when that time came. Four years ago, he became a member of the William Ravis Realty family. When Pete purchased the building at 255 Main Street for his office, he brought in Glastonbury Bank &amp; Trust, which is now TD Bank, where Camilla had worked, and now she's in our Middletown office. But it's one of only two banks that we have here on Main Street. So, really, he's been instrumental in making sure that our Main Street stays full and that our Village District is a place that other businesses want to be. In addition to his business skills, Pete's volunteered for numerous charitable organizations, town boards, and commissions. He's a trustee and member of the Finance Committee at St. Mary's Church. He was one of the original members of the group that, with John, started the Hospice Golf Tournament for Middlesex Hospital. He is the longest-serving, active member of the Exchange Club, having served as a past president and board member during his 52 years with the Exchange Club. He's a past member of the Housing Code Board of Appeals and serves on the Board of Directors of the Marion Housing Corporation. And from January of 2004 to December of 2013, he served as a member of the Economic Development Commission. I can tell you that since he resigned, I've been in this job seven and a half years, and I've just missed his expertise and his knowledge. There really is no way to place a value on his contribution to the Economic Development Commission here in Portland. He was always with us, first and foremost, an advocate for small businesses and for the town of Portland. He always focused on issues in a nonpartisan and fair-minded way, and provided the Commission with the history of a property, a business, or a set of regulations. With the establishment of the Village District came a new set of regulations for our Main Street businesses, and, as you can expect, growing pains. But as a Main Street business owner, Pete was just invaluable as a member of our Economic Development Commission, providing thoughtful and logical insight into any issue. So, after more than 60 years serving Portland as a businessman, advocate, volunteer, and Commission member, I am very proud to present Peter Lamafa with the Portland Economic Development Commission's 2014 Business Man of the Year Award. On behalf of the town and the Economic Development Commission, I want to present that to you for everything that you have done for the town and for all of us.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I want to thank everybody on the Commission, and everybody else in the town and Portland. 54 years, terrific place to raise a family, and enjoy your work that you do, and be able to help people when it's necessary. I'm pretty sure I'm giving speeches. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And this is also from Portland Golf and Commission.
You give me lots to talk about, the decades of your service. Because all of you should know that Portland was named one of the top 10 places to live in the state, and it's people like you that enable us to be proud of us. So, thank for all you have done over the decades. Being noted, the entire General Assembly offers its serious congratulations to your recognition of your decades of service to the town of Portland, and your helpful staff for the community. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Pete.
Thank you for the two houses you helped me. And we love the boat.
Let's get a quick picture in there. Thank you very much. Everyone, thank you for coming tonight. There's punch and cookies and time for everybody to mingle, and I really appreciate it, but more importantly, I hope you realize the depth of what you've done for our community, because if it wasn't for people like this and businesses like this, this wouldn't be the kind of place where we all want to live and we want to stay, and that's why generations of us are here, is because it's such a great place to be. So, thank you all, and please enjoy what's out.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, please. It's in the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. There are some extra agendas for this evening's meeting up in the front. If anyone needs one, please help yourselves. The right text to Kathy, from Kathy. The first item is approval of minutes from the regular December 17, 2014 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, one abstention from Howard. How many ayes? Raise your hands.
For December, aye.
Two abstentions, Kathy and Howard abstentions, and one, two, three, four yeses. Motion passes. The second is the February 18, 2015 minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second by Kathy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Carl Chudzik abstention. Everyone else passes. Motion passes.
I, within the agenda, we're going to eliminate number 14. I do not have a report on land acquisition tonight, so we will eliminate that, Laura. And with that one change, and the re-numeration of the items from 15 down, from 14, 15, and so forth, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Carl, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we have our auditors here tonight. Tom, did you want to introduce our auditors? We have a special presentation from Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company. Mike? Good. Thanks for coming. Yeah?
Michael Van Deventer is here today as a partner of Mahoney &amp; Sable to present our June 30, 2014 financial statements, and go over them at a summarized level with you all, and also any questions related to the federal and state single audits. Mr. Van Deventer is the co-chair of the Government Division there at Mahoney &amp; Sable.
Hey, Mike, thanks for coming. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Pleased to be here this evening to communicate the results of your fiscal year 2014 audit. I know you have a very busy agenda this evening, so I will keep my communications on point. Overall, I thought the audit went very smoothly, was very pleased with how the audit was conducted. We did not have any significant audit findings or issues, and that's reflected in our audit reports that were issued. I do have a presentation that I would like to run through. It covers all of our required communications, and then provide you with some overall financial highlights from the audit. Jumping into page two, in terms of the scope of work, we did perform a financial statement audit for the town. We performed that in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also did a compliance audit, a federal and state single audit. We did perform and agreed-upon procedures for the Board of Education on their Form EDO-1 and related end-of-school-year reports. In addition, we did assist in the preparation of the financial statements, as well as the schedule of expenditures of federal wards, and the schedule of state financial assistance. Any question in terms of the scope of work? No? Okay. In connection with the audit, we do issue a number of reports. We did issue an unmodified clean opinion on your financial statement. That opinion provides reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and that they've been prepared in accordance with the accounting standards. Our opinions do cover multiple statements within the financial statements. For the town, it does cover your governmental activities, the Gildersleeve Wheeler Educational Trust, which is presented as a discreetly presented component unit, as well as each of the town's major funds. For the town, your major funds were the General Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, your Special Assessment Fund, as well as your Capital and Nonrecurring Fund. In addition to that, we do also issue an opinion on your aggregate remaining information, which includes all of your special revenue funds, your permanent funds, your pension trust funds, agency funds, and private purpose trust funds. And all that information is detailed in your supplemental information behind the notes to the financial statements. All right? Whenever we perform an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we are required to issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. We do not express an opinion on your compliance or on your internal control. To the extent we identify a material noncompliance with the law or regulation, or a material weakness or significant deficiency in your internal control structure, we would be required to include it in this letter. And we did not identify any such matters. So, overall, that report was also clean. In connection with the federal single audit, we issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the federal ward level. We do actually express an opinion on your compliance over your major programs. For the town, your major programs was the Child Nutrition Grant Cluster Program, as well as the Special Education Grant Cluster Program. Both of those are education programs. Based on our procedures, we did issue an unmodified clean opinion on your compliance, and we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal control over those programs. Similarly, at the state level, we issued the same report. Again, the total nonexempt state financial assistance that was expended by the town was approximately 1.2 million. The town's major programs was the High Quality School Startup Grant, the Town Aid Road Grant, the Local Capital Improvement Program, and the Open Choice Program. Again, based on our audit procedures, we did issue an unmodified clean opinion on compliance over those programs, and again, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal control over those programs. So, overall, from a reporting perspective, again, things were very clean. Moving on to some financial highlights, slide seven goes over your government-wide financial statements. This includes all of the assets of the town, including your infrastructure, your buildings, and your other capital assets, as well as the related debt. As of June 30, 2014, your assets exceeded your liabilities by approximately 67.2 million, of which approximately 60.3 million represents your investment in capital assets. The unrestricted net position of the town totaled approximately 6.4 million compared to 6.2 million in the prior year, so there was a slight increase in your unrestricted net position. Overall, your net position increased by 1.6 million, and you didn't have any additional debt issuances during the year. The other point that I was just going to highlight is the town does currently have an $8.4 million net pension liability related to its pension plans. Right now, that information is disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. It is not reflected on the balance sheet. Next year, the town will be required to report that on the balance sheet. That will put the town in an overall deficit, but that's going to affect many of the municipalities throughout the state of Connecticut. You intend to fund those plans over a period of time, so obviously, you don't have those resources in place now. Any questions on the government-wide statements? The next slide goes over your governmental fund financial statements. Again, this includes the General Fund, as well as all your other special revenue and capital project funds. The combined ending fund balances as of year-end totaled approximately 7.7 million, which was an increase of 254,000. Your total fund balances consisted of 5.4 million in the General Fund. You have a deficit in your Capital Project Fund of 644,000. That deficit was decreased by 125,000 during the current year. Your Special Assessment Fund has an $833,000 fund balance. The Capital Nonrecurring Fund had a $1.2 million fund balance, and your other funds collectively had a $931,000 fund balance. So, in terms of, from a financial perspective, one of the things we always note is, if any of the funds do have a deficit fund balance, the key there is that the board is aware of those deficits, and is working on a plan to address those deficits. And obviously, based on the public hearing tonight, that's something that you're working towards. Any questions on the governmental funds highlights? Okay. Next slide goes over the General Fund. On a budgetary basis, the original budget for the General Fund included the use of fund balance and the amount of $300,000 to budget, or to balance the budget. There were additional appropriations of $497,000 for monies that were transferred to the Capital and Nonrecurring Fund to fund long-term capital improvements. The actual change in the fund balance was a decrease of 108,000. Your revenues were 56,000 higher than budgeted, and your expenditures were $632,000 less than budgeted, with really positive variances across all departments. So, there wasn't really a single driver in your favorable variance on expenditures. The next section goes over our required communications. These are communications that our standards require that we communicate to the board. The first bullet here talks about our responsibilities. Again, our responsibility is to perform an audit of your financial statements and issue an opinion. The financial statements themselves are the responsibility of management. Although we do assist in the preparation of those statements, all that information does come from management, and ultimately, management has reviewed and approved those statements. With respect to the plan, scope, and timing of the audit, again, there was no change in the scope of the audit, and the timing was conducted in accordance with the timeline that was agreed upon with management. With respect to significant audit findings, again, the town did implement a new standard this year, GASB Statement Number 67, which changed your disclosures on your pension plans. The net pension liabilities that were calculated under that standard will get recorded on the balance sheet next year. Really, there was no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements. So, again, during the course of performing our audit, we did not identify any adjustments that were required to be recorded. There were no disagreements with management. We did obtain a representation letter. There was nothing unusual in that letter that we would be required to inform you of. We were not aware of any consultations with other independent accountants. And so, overall, again, I think, from my perspective, the audit went very well, and things are pretty clean. Yes?
There's another question. The funding of the pension liabilities, I believe I read the other information was, is about 68.5 percent.
That's the funded status of the plan as of June 30. So, that's as a period of time.
How is that compared with general funding?
I think, overall, that's probably similar to funding levels throughout the state of Connecticut. Typically, anything over 80 percent would be considered a very well-funded plan. Anything between 65 and 80 percent is kind of just below that threshold. You know, certainly, depending on market conditions, that can certainly change pretty quickly. So, overall, I think it's important that you continue to fund your pension plans based on the actuarial required contributions that are provided.
Any questions? Tom, did you have any comments? Good job, Tom. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. The next item is a resolution that is in your, excuse me, public comment. There'll be opportunity for public comment after the status reports later on in the meeting as well. The next item would be the resolution that's presented to you, which is appointment of the auditor of public accounts. And I'll read it. Resolved at pursuit of Section 407 of the Portland Town Charter, the Board of Sleckman hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company, LLP, of 95 Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite 201, Glastonbury, to audit the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion made by, I would like to excuse myself, possible conflict of interest. Motion made by Ryan, seconded by Kathy Richards. One recusal?
I will, I will.
Two recusals. Okay, so I need four votes. All in favor? Aye. One, two, three, four. Yeses. Two recusals, one from Howard, and one from Fred. Thank you. Thanks very much, Mike. Good to see you. The next item is, we have a special guest here tonight, Gail Petito. And after a review of over a dozen applicants, we, Tom and Tom Robinson, who has walked on the phone, and I reviewed the applications, we asked for a couple of interviews, and Gail has been selected by me as the best candidate. selected by me as the best candidate for our assessor. Gail, I want to thank you for applying and for agreeing to be our next assessor. You're doing a fabulous job for us, and we're very proud of you. So I would entertain someone to read the resolution. Kathy?
Appointment of Assessor. We have resolved that pursuant to section 1002-C, the Town of Portland Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints Gail M. Petito as Assessor of the Town of Portland, effective immediately.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ryan. Any discussion? Fred?
Yeah, I think you made an excellent choice. I can't think of a better choice. And my view of Gail and the town, the town building was very positive. Congratulations.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations. Look forward to many years of service, and certainly grateful to you for your many years of service that you've already provided to the town. Are there any comments that you'd like to make?
Honored to have the opportunity.
Great. We look forward to many years of your service. Thank you, Gail, and don't forget, report to work first thing in the morning. Congratulations. It's a happy day. And we have another special guest here tonight. Mary Dickerson is here tonight. After many years of Bernadette Dillon being our town clerk and faithful service of 37 years, she decided to retire. And after many interviews, the Democratic Town Committee made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that Mary Dickerson received the most votes of the Democratic Town Committee and was found to be the most qualified to become our town clerk. So I would ask perhaps Howard to read.
Appointment of the Town Clerk. Whereas the Democratic Town Committee conducted interviews of several applicants and endorsed one candidate to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Town Clerk Bernadette M. Dillon, now therefore be it resolved. Pursuant to CGS section 9220, the Board of Selectmen hereby appoints Mary D. Dickerson as Town Clerk of the Town of Portland, effective immediately to serve through the unexpired portion of such term, of which expires December 31, 2015. And be it further resolved that the next regular municipal election will be held on November 3, 2015, at which time the electors of the Town of Portland will vote the candidate to serve as Town Clerk for the term of four years, starting January 1, 2016.
Do you move the resolution, Howard?
I move it.
Is there a second? Seconded by Kathy. Discussion, Howard? Excuse me, not Howard. Fred?
Yeah, I have the pleasure of knowing Mary, and having worked with her on Economic Development Commission for a number of years, I know she's got to do an outstanding job. Very detailed person, Mary. She follows through on everything. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, I don't agree all the time with the Democratic Committee. But I think they made a good choice.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And our Assistant Town Clerk is here tonight to administer the oath of office, which I would like to invite you both up to the podium. Call up Slim. Thanks for coming, Call. Assessor doesn't have to be sworn in.
Okay. Okay, bless. Yeah, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will fulfill the duties as Town Clerk for the Town of Portland to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Do you have any words for us? Do I have words?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy for the opportunity.
Report to work in the morning. It is a great occasion to have two very qualified people, not just because of their schooling and their experiences, but also because I think they deeply care about the Town of Portland and the way it is to be administered and run. And I'm very grateful to have you a part of the team, and I know that you'll both do a fabulous job for us. So congratulations and best wishes. Enjoy the glory, because the work is, a lot of good work ahead. So thank you. Round of applause. The next item is a grant. It's the Justice Assistance Grant 2015, which is a violent crime prevention program. It's a $30,000 grant that our department has received, and we're certainly very grateful for it. I would invite one of the selectmen to read the resolution. Carl?
Whereas the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management is providing grants to assist local police departments with violent crime prevention and public safety improvements funded by the Federal Justice Assistant Formula Grant, the JAG program. Now therefore be it resolved that Susan S. Bransfield's first select woman is hereby authorized to sign and submit to OPM any and all documents necessary to apply for the JAG 2015 VCP grant in the amount of $30,000.
Do you move adoption?
So moved.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Howard. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I want to thank our staff in the police department that help us write these grants and obtain them, and Roseanne Lombardi, excuse me. Roseanne does a really good job and is very efficient in making sure these grants get applied for, and of course, our finance office in terms of making sure that we are properly managed. So thank you, and thanks to our police department. The next is a resolution for the Regional Performance Incentive Program. This is a resolution that will allow us to participate with the Council of Governments, the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, in an initiative toward getting some regional performance incentive program proposals, such as a parcel update for Inland-Wetland Layer Project and the Lower Connecticut River Region Tourism and Transit Study and a marketing plan, and a state-regional cooperative aerial flyover and LEEDAR data project. I would entertain a motion to approve the RPI Program Resolution of Endorsement Authorization. Someone? Seconded. Seconded by Howard. Discussion, questions? If there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And I will let you know the progress as we learn whether we have received this through the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments. I think I'm going to have Rick speak to the next item, which is an update. There's not a resolution per se on this, but it is information on the sewer division and capital improvement matter. Did you want to just say a couple? I'm sorry. There is a resolution, Tom? Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
The green.
The green one. Okay. But did you want to explain it, or which one? I'm sorry. Okay. I was thinking of the other item, Rick.
Yep.
Which this is, but...
So recently, as you've heard today, there's been a deep directive that has come out that's required with a piece of equipment to be purchased called a screening washer compactor. And in that, we're utilizing monies that are in our capital fund, 08141, and it's 89110. That's our sewer department line item. And under that, there's various categories. The category that we are purchasing this out is called Plant System Improvements. So this is a $96,000 item that we did go out to bid for, and there were funds available in that account. But in, under that category of the sewer department, there were three projects that had been there that have been pretty much completed. And those were $54 of a replacement of a dump, of a pickup truck, so that was the remaining money of a pickup truck that we acquired, $790 for some lab equipment that we had acquired left over, and $2,354 for billing software. So those items total $3,198. So pretty much all this resolution is doing is under that umbrella of the sewer department and capital of 0814100089110, which is our capital CNR recurring fund. This is transferring those remaining funds into the Plant System Improvements line item, which has been significantly depleted from the need to purchase the screening washer compactor. So that gives us an opportunity, if any other items, either on the installation of this component, or if there's any other items that are required, come in for Plant System Improvements, that money would therefore be sitting in that component. So that's simply, it's just really, it's taking the monies that were in, capital that had been, capital plans that had been completed successfully, and moving those remaining funds into a project that can more utilize those type of funds.
Questions?
When did we buy the equipment?
All different types of years. The truck, the pickup truck, I want to say, which equipment?
No, the new equipment.
That has been, we went out to bid just recently, and it's actually, the PO was issued probably last month.
Okay. That's what we were talking earlier about.
Correct.
Okay, there's been an explanation, and would anyone like to move the resolution? Howard, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Any way of reading, because Tom explained it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we'll move on to proposed water and sewer rate changes. We had a public hearing, 13, oh, I'm sorry, 13, we are going to do. Thank you, Kathy. 14, we eliminated. 13 is a request for the riverfront park improvements, and the Planning Department asked that we refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission under statute 8-24, whereby they will review what it is we're doing and give either their approval or not. So I'm asking for a simple motion to approve, need to sign an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the review of the riverfront park improvements. Motion made by Howard. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Fred. Any discussion on that? I think you're familiar, that's the road and the bathrooms and the cover to the stage, but we haven't actually sent it to Planning and Zoning. So with approval of this motion, we, yes? Repeat the motion. The motion is to send to the Planning and Zoning Commission under statute 8-24, a review of the riverfront park improvements, as established by the steep Grant, Roundstone Avenue, number four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, the next item is the one that I took off the agenda, so we will not be talking about grant improvement, grants and acquisitions. So the next item is the proposed water and sewer rate changes. And you heard the discussion tonight during the public hearing, so I'll open it up for discussion to the select. Fred, did you have anything?
Yes, I have some comments, and also a proposed amendment. I think it's clear that everybody agrees there's a significant shortfall, and there's kind of a consensus that that should be addressed. My concern is when and if we increase the rates, how that's going to impact certain customers. All customers get impacted. The rate increase goes in, you go get a glass of water, you wash your clothes, you do your car, all those things, of course, are going to consume water that you're going to be paying more for. My concern, and the reason for my amendment, is to try to mitigate the impact of this. I would like not to see people receive a sticker shock with the first bill. We have a lot of increases going on. We have CLMP increases for utilities. That impact people. This is another bill. There are some other proposed taxes at the state level that would filter down and affect consumers too. So I thought it might be a good idea to try to phase this in over a period of time. And again, I think, I was trying to consider the impact on the consumers and the customers, and not have people all of a sudden be facing this large bill. It's going to vary from person to person, it's going to vary from business to business. We're not even sure, I think, in some cases, just how much of an impact it will have on certain kinds of businesses. For example, we have in town quite a few people who have rental units, and if you have 10 rental units, clearly, you're the landlord. In most cases, those individuals are paying the bill, because they're not individually meters. So instead of having, you know, whatever that bill is, that increase is going to be multiplied times 10. If there are some units that people have that are individually metered, they're really going to get socked, because they're going to get socked with the cost of the 5/8 to 3/4 meter size, they'll have to pay that, instead of having a bill of $15, it'll be up to $30 a quarter. So they're going to get whacked. So there are some people that are going to be impacted, and there are people who are really hurting in $200, $300, or $400, you know, it's a big bill to them, and if it's a $200 bill, or if it's a $100 increase or more, they're going to feel it. The other issue is, we all know that when you increase the price of something, the usage tends to go down. So while we might think we're going to get X number of dollars because of a rate increase, we might find that we're going to get a little bit less than that, because people will tend to conserve more. Maybe I'm not going to wash my car, or if I do wash my car, maybe I'll wash it out of town, because the car wash is going to have to raise their rates if they're on public water. I think one of them is, and one might not be. So all those things kind of entered into my thinking. So I thought at least we could do is to phases in, using the effective dates as the phase in vehicle. And what I'm suggesting is that, as you look at the current proposal in front of us, we leave in effect the, all the charges would go into effect July 1 of 2015, except the water usage and water sewer rate, which would be phased in later on. So immediately, or after the July 1 date, a certain amount of money would be coming into the town to start to address the deficit. It's not going to cover the whole thing, obviously. But again, as Susan mentioned before, I think the board has made it pretty clear that we would like to see a more aggressive collection of unpaid bills. And I think that certainly can generate some money in the short term, as that's been done. I think in the public hearing, that was one of the things that stood out. People really felt that we should be doing everything we can to address that issue, and it's certainly not fair to the people paying their bills, if you have, we have people who are ignoring it. So that's the first phase in, all the penalties, et cetera. As you look at the first page of our sheet there, sewer department rates, water department rates, everything in there, including the flat meter charges, they would, all those things would go into effect after July 1. And then the other two phase-ins would be the water usage rate and the sewage usage rate. And they would be phased in as follows. They're kind of split in half. We wanted to, the theory was to get to 462, so I'm suggesting that as of... And it's certainly not fair to the people paying their bills if you have, we have people who are ignoring it. So that's, um, that's the first phase in, um, all the penalties, et cetera. As you look at the first page of our, we have our sheet there, um, the sewer department rates, uh, water department rates, everything in there, including the flat meter charges, uh, they would, uh, all those things would go into effect after July one. And then the other two phase, the two phase ins would be the water usage rate and the sewage usage, usage rate. And, um, they would be phased in as follows, they're kind of split in half. We wanted to, the theory was to get to four sixty-two. So I'm suggesting, um, that as of, um, January, January one, two thousand and sixteen, we go to, um, half of that of four dollars and twenty-five cents. And staying with the water usage rate, then as of April one of two thousand and sixteen, we go to four sixty-two. Now that would, at that point, we would be, um, in agreement with the proposals you have in front of you as far as, um, the rate increase of, of, uh, water to four sixty-two. Sewage would go to, January one of, um, two thousand and sixteen, we'd go to five fifty-two. Then in April of two thousand and sixteen, it would go to six oh eight. And again, that would bring us in compliance with, um, the document you had before, with, uh, the proposed rate increases. And the, as I say, the thing it would accomplish, or the thing I would hope it would accomplish, it would let people do a little planning, it would let us, um, not receive one big bill all at one time. And, and certainly everybody would be aware of this as it goes on. And, uh, then we have to look at some of the other issues that we brought up, like our infrastructure and, um, paying down the deficit. But we're not going to pay it down if we raise rates so high that, uh, the usage goes down significantly. So that's the proposal, any questions on Friday answer?
Get that up, questions?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll go. So I mean, I, I just have to disagree with your propos, with your proposal. And we just can't afford it, and I wish we could. Um, I, you know, it's tough that we have to be in this situation. Honestly, truth be told, I don't think we've been doing our job for years on this and we should have been raising rates for a while now. And now we're kind of left asking, you know, the town, the people that, you know, get these services to pay for the thing, you know, our mistakes in, in some kind of respect. Six hundred sixteen thousand dollars is what we're in the hole for today. We, I just don't understand how we could responsibly make the decision to delay, um, fixing this gap, at least stopping the bleeding, which we're not even sure that these rates do. And I, I mean, the, at the worst case scenario, we just get ourselves more in the hole as of right now. Um, I also think that if you looked at, you know, the amount of people that were here tonight and voiced their concerns, I didn't hear too much opposition tonight, not as much as, uh, at the last public hearing. And I think that is also to the point that we did address some of the concerns about the fixed rate being, um, too high. And we lowered that fixed rate, which amounted to fifty thousand dollars. Um, and so that, that's a, you know, I know it's only forty dollars, uh, a year for some people, but it still makes a difference, uh, if your usage isn't high. So we have listened, we have, we're doing our best as far as these rates. But, you know, the town charter says we need to balance this budget and we haven't been. And so there's, there's no point in delaying it at this point because that's, that's really not our job. Our job is to balance the budget. So I don't, I really can't see us putting it off.
I, yeah, I, no, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I look at it a little bit differently in that I think part of it is to, is to make sure that we don't hurt people. And there are people out there who are living on the edge. We haven't heard a whole lot tonight, but believe me, when this goes into effect, I think you'll hear more and I think Susan will hear more, um, when people start reading the bills. A lot of people honestly, uh, aren't aware of this going into effect. Some people are, but I've talked to a few people, had no idea that there was going to be a rate increase. So, yeah, you know, uh, we don't even know, well, you, you, you said that maybe it's not, what we're doing isn't even going to, you know, be going to manage. That might be true. But we do know that there, there's some, there's some money that will be coming in that wasn't coming in before, that's going to be working down that deficit. I, you know, I, I can think there's an appropriation on hydrants for fifty thousand dollars. That comes in immediately into the, that comes into the, um, the pot immediately. Uncollected, uh, the, the liens, we'll be collecting hopefully a substantial amount of money there. But I, but the point being, Mrs. Jones can't, you know, I, I, I'm worried about Mrs. Jones. You open up and, and splitting on a social security check. And all of a sudden, you know, we're coming along, along with the rate increases for the utilities. Uh, I know we have no control over that. But now she is, is opening that bill and she has to pay it and she doesn't have much money. I, though, those, that's part of this, when we do this, this is what happens to some people out there. Some of us were working, yeah, we, you know, people rousting so we can pay it. But there are some people who really hurts.
And if we had been raising the rates like we were supposed to be doing this entire time, we wouldn't have to apologize to these Mrs. Joneses. And, and it's really unfortunate that we do because you're right, this does hurt people. And as many people that don't know that what, how much, um, their rates are going to go up, I guarantee they don't know how much the deficit is. Because that, oh, it's over half a million dollars, which is way more than any outstanding, uh, amount of money we'd get from past due collections. So we can't even fill in that gap. If everyone who owed us money paid us today, we still would have a deficit. So I, I mean, there's no way to get this money, uh, unfortunately, we just, there's nothing left to do. I mean, uh, I just don't see any other way than to do this fix today.
Well, the, the one thing that I think Fred, your proposal does do is it, um, implements the rates that are, um, noticed in the public hearing. Um, I think there needs to be a recognition that, um, the mitigation of the impact, um, that your proposal makes, I think, will allow our customers to have a planning tool. So they will be, as, as we do, we notify people. Um, for example, we will notify them, if, if this should pass tonight, we will notify them in their April tenth billing that their rate, the base rate will change and many of the other aspects of this public hearing notice that we talked about earlier tonight will be implemented with the seven one fifteen date. So the notification will go in the bills in April. And the rate increase will occur starting seven one. They will pay the increase amount, because they'll be billed on ten, ten fifteen. And then they will receive notification October ten of the next rate increase whereby, um, from three eighty-eight per hundred cubic feet, they will go to four dollars and twenty-five cents per hundred cubic feet. And the sewer rate will go from four ninety-six to five dollars and fifty-two cents. And the base rate will be included, as it had been for the previous billing. And that these rates will be reflected, um, in the billing issued in April tenth sixteen. So those dollars will come in. And then notifications will be sent in the January tenth billing. Um, and the water rate changes that would come effect on April one would be, um, the increase from the four twenty-five, which had been increased. It will go to the six, four sixty-two. And the sewer usage rate will go from five fifty-two to six dollars and eight cents. And those rate changes will be reflected in the billing that's issued July tenth, twenty sixteen. It allows customers the opportunity to plan, um, for the increases that will occur and they will be cumulative. So as the first rate is increased, the second rate will be added to that and then the third juncture, it will be added as well. So I think we accomplish the increase in revenues that we are required to, um, make. And it also gives some planning time and I think a recognition that our businesses and our families, um, do need, um, to pay more in their bills and it gives them the opportunity to plan for it and a recognition that we understand that this will have a significant impact.
Susan, where did you get that, that rate increase from? Because it's different than what we, we never voted or talked about, a, uh, any specific.
Isn't that what, what you just talked about?
No, but where did, I've never seen that.
I wrote it up myself because I went down and I talked to the collective revenue to see when we issue bills, which is April tenth, July tenth, October tenth, January tenth, April tenth, and then again in July tenth.
Well, if you were going to propose this tonight, wouldn't it have made sense to let us see it ahead of time? So we could know what you were going to talk about?
The rates are the same, the rates are the same.
The rate, but the timing is completely different than what we've been discussing for months now.
We haven't been discussing it for months, we've been discussing it for the last several weeks. And we have been discussing rate increases for a long time.
And this is the very first time I've, I've seen you talk about a specific time of rate increases and, and you haven't shared it with the rest of the board prior to, right now.
Okay, I think when you look at the public hearing and you think about what people talked about during the public hearing, one of the issues that has been brought up is the amount of the increase and the, the quickness of this increase and the impact that people have. I think, um, in terms of how you bill, um, we did talk about how we bill, that we bill in April, July, October, January. And to be honest with you, um, in terms of how we bill, I'm not sure that the full board is cognizant of how we bill. And I don't know if you knew that April tenth, I know we talked about it, I don't know that we wrote it down, but we certainly have been doing this for a long time. And honestly, I have talked about this, um, at our public hearings and the last time we talked about this in terms of issuing the public notice, I remember saying that I thought there needed to be some kind of recognition of the amount of this increase for our customers. And I do remember saying that clearly and I did some research. I did, I did do some research and I'm happy to share it with you.
Well, I brought, I had talked to Susan, Mike, because I said I was going to do something and that. I brought last time.
So it, I mean, we can, we can vote for this and then we could set like, and this goes into effect in twenty fifty-two and we're, and all is good. So what, so what you're essentially doing is you're taking the proposal to, to fix the, or at least fix the bleeding in the water and sewer and you're just kind of maybe throwing some gauze on it right now.
I think it's more than that, right? I, I, you know, it, I, I think it's a, it's an attempt. Uh, because any, any body could down the road, change anything that's done before. So as far as rates, I mean, somebody could, if we, we were all left and they had a new board, you know, they could put the rates down or up. But, but this does get at the issue of, of the amount of money that's needed. If we were going to put it into effect, the, the dollar amount's the same as you, the proposal you had in front of you. Yeah, we're delaying it, but in effect of using a, a, a phase in is, is really a very common part of.
Not only you're six hundred, over six hundred thousand dollars in the hole. I, and have you calculated how much more this will cost by doing this phase in? Because I'd like to know at, once everything's gone in, what's the difference? Because that deficit down the road is going to be a lot higher than when, where we are today. And I'd like to know where we're going to get the money from for that. Because we don't even have the money for what we already owe. So how are we doing, how are we affording this?
But Ryan, you know, we, we are six hundred thousand in the hole and we're never going to make that up overnight. I mean, we'd have to charge each customer three thousand dollars to do that.
But we can stop getting more in the hole. We, we're still digging. We bought a pen for a dollar and instead of selling it to you for ninety cents, we're selling it to you for ninety-five and we're still losing five cents.
But you know, we do have a lot of people on a fixed income and a lot of young families that have to pay these bills and it's very difficult, it really is.
All of us do, and, and, and.
We all do, right. Well, you don't have city water, but we all pay our bills.
Right.
Um, so this is one other thing that people have to pay. And, and I think the planning aspect is very important.
But, you know, if I may comment on this, you know, I got to agree with, you know, Ryan here on this. We have to stop the bleeding, we can't kick, kicking the can down the road. Now you say about giving people advanced notice. Well, five years ago, we started with this. It was a fifteen percent increase, I wanted to do it right then, five years ago, I wanted to do it. But instead, we did a three percent supposedly for a five-year term to increase, to make it more palatable, to make it easier for families, so they would know that these increases are coming. So it's been for, out of that five, four years we implemented. The fifth year we didn't because we're going to be where we are now and talk about it. So everybody knew that these increases are coming. We're, we need this money to stop going further in the hole, just to get even where we're supposed to be. You know, run this company, you know, not in a deficit. And as far as picking, you know, what we heard, what I heard from, you know, the hearings we had earlier, you know, have people, uh, pay their bills and so forth. Well, that money could, is going to be used towards possibly towards our deficit. We're talking about the actual running of the, of the water company now. We need that money. And why, why push it off a year? Let's get it down, start getting our, our financial house in order and this is how we have to start. I, I, you know, and I know way gas goes up, electricity goes up, we, we all know that. And it's, and, and I don't want to be put out as the bad guy, like we're the big bad guy people that are trying to put, putting this out. I think if we don't raise the rates, we are being the bad guy because we're not doing our financial responsibility of, 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 of running this water problem.
This flat rate hasn't gone up since nineteen ninety-six. I don't understand why this.
And it will go up, it will go up July first, if you were, if.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't have, I don't have what you're proposing in front of me, so I can't read what you're trying to tell me.
That is what Fred just said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I did, I should have provided the copies I made to you, uh, it would have been helpful to you. But that's basically that, that, as, as Susan just said, that, that first phase in is, is going to pick up, you know, is going to pick up the meter size, all that money, the fines, uh, uh, the, uh, the fire hydrants, anything that's in a proposal that we had in front of us, it gets picked up in that.
And that's just money from the general fund anyway, so it's really, I mean, we're, we're already taking money from the general fund to begin with, with those, with the, uh.
Some of it is with, yeah, you know, some of it with the meter size, uh, that's the customer that's paying that.
You know, and, and we have been discussing this for months. Um, I think even our, our chairman here, who's been there, uh, Decody could, could verify it and possibly have any, you have any comment on this?
The discussion is at this level and that's the way we keep our discussions during, during.
Okay, we possibly open it at public conference at that time because I think there is other, 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 uh.
What about comments that have to be brought in?
I think that our, that our board, who is the authority for passing rates, has gone through a lot of research for the increase in rates. And these rates are, I will point out, as are stated on your public hearing notification, um, if I could just iterate, um, the per hundred cubic feet for the water usage, once all of the rates are increased, is nineteen percent. And the sewer usage rate, once all of this is concluded, is twenty-two and a half percent. The numbers haven't changed. What we're trying to do is to recognize that our customers do have a burden. And I think that it is important that they, and they certainly know that these rates are going to be going up and they'll go up July first. The base rate will increase to thirty dollars per quarter for water and thirty dollars per quarter for the sewer. And the other meters will increase at the rates that are listed here, um, as well as all of the other dollars that are, that are in here. What Fred is proposing is that half of the hundred. Oh, I thought.
No.
We understand what Fred wants to.
But we, we haven't, we haven't raised these rates in so long that if we had just done, you can't say that all of a sudden, our job is to balance the budget according to town charter. That's what we do, that's what, why we're here. And we haven't been doing this. And the fact that we're six hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars in the hole is a testament to the fact that we haven't been keeping up with the rates the way we should be. Now, now we know this, we are all aware of the fact that we have not been raising the rates. So to say now that we are fully aware, but we're not going to fix the problem, we're going to fix it eventually, is, I think, very, very irresponsible. And I'm sorry that we have to do this, but it's our fault and we should take ownership of the mistakes that we made. And we should say to the people, the Mrs. Joneses of the world, I'm sorry, Mrs. Jones, but if we had just done our job for the past ten years, maybe you wouldn't have this high of a burden now. And I'm sorry we have to do this, but we can't kick this can because. And I'm sorry we have to do this, but we can't kick this can because that's not what we're here to do. We're here to make some tough decisions. And I don't understand how you guys can come up here with this proposal that you never shared to the board and then tell us that this is the way you think it should work and you're gonna get us more in the hole than where we are now, which is over half a million dollars.
Well, it's gonna be interesting, um, over the next month and a half, um, as we talk about the annual budget. And, um, we have a capital plan, for example, a five-year capital plan, that if you fully fund it tomorrow, sure, you'd be able to make huge improvements in our infrastructure. But you can't afford to do it all at once, but you do need to, you do need to have a plan and you do need to, to implement it over time. It's gonna be interesting because as I put forward the, the proposal for the budget, um, we'll have to talk about whether you can do what's in the budget or whether you're gonna not do some of it and do other pieces. Um, it's always a choice as to how we, um, proceed to raise rates or whether we raise taxes or whether we go out to bond. And I think that the dollars that will be increased are substantial. And I can say that as a customer, we have seven members of our house that use the water bill. I would estimate for an average seven-person household, you're going to see, once everything is done, once all the rates are increased, it's gonna be a substantial increase each quarter, as well as each year, and the revenues will come into the, um, into the water and into the sewer. So, I don't know where you want to go from here. Fred, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, no, I, I just.
One, one thing here, Fred. You, you said that we didn't, we had a plan. We had a plan for five years to increase three percent a year. We only did it four years. That other three percent was not added on the last year and a year and a half, so, I mean, we should've put that on too. So that's pushing it down, pushing it down and it, unfortunately, no one wants to pay more money, obviously. But we're not making money. This is, uh, the, the water and sewer companies are, are right beer thin. They're working really hard. They don't have like extra money. This is not to buy them, you know, all kinds of new extravagant equipment. This is just, we have to get this money now and to push it further down the line, I, I don't thi- I think it's irresponsible. I think we should just do it now, finish it, and, and if it's too much, if we're making that much money next year, we, we should revisit this also. Probably on a yearly basis, a little, a little better on that too. But, uh, instead of every four or five years, because it got out of, it's got out of here.
Yes.
And then, and, and for the collection of the money, that still doesn't affect our operating costs. That, we can put that towards our deficit and that's still hanging over us. So to push this down for, you know what, for ten months or a year later, I don't think it's gonna be that.
It's a relatively short time.
I don't think it's gonna make that much difference and I think it's, it's gonna be that price eventually anyway. So why wait and, and, and push the, the, the burden down? Let's start dealing with what we should be doing now. Unfortunately, we have to do it.
The thing is, this wasn't bipartisan. At the last meeting, both Kathy and Brian supported doing that, right? Kat, at the last meeting, you said, we can't afford to do this at the last meeting. The, the people, yeah.
I did. But I hear these people. You're right. I did, but I hear these people and it worries me because that.
Who, how mu- who did, I heard one person say.
Well, the three people that spoke tonight all said.
I heard one. I wrote, I had, wrote down what everyone said.
Ken Kearns, Mrs. Miller and, oh, Mr. Manning spoke, but, and he doesn't like it either. But, you know, I agree, we need to make up this money, but.
Only one asked about the, the phase in and that was for senior citizens and that was Stephanie.
One person at a time, please. Kathy?
So, yes, I did say that last time. We need to address this. But if you get, you got your electric bill in January, which went up twenty-two, twenty-four percent, everybody had it.
Yeah.
And then in July, they're gonna get this bill that goes up, um, people are upset. They can't afford it. And granted, to drag it out for a year, it's not gonna make that big a difference, but it is to the people who can plan and that's my reason for bringing, to, to what Fred said and changing my mind. Because I think it's just a little tiny bit, but it would help if they get an extra hundred and twenty charged this year and an extra hundred next year. Either way, it's not gonna make a big difference for us. It's not gonna bring up, you know, the six hundred fifteen thousand dollar deficit.
But that money, that money that they're saving is not really saving. It's just being deferred further down the line.
It's saving them for this year.
No, it's not. It's just pushing the bill further down the line. You're gonna have to eventually pay for it.
They're gonna, they're gonna pay for what they use this year.
Right, so they're gonna be paying for it later because the deficit will be bigger. So let's get our financial responsibilities a- and, and house in order now. We have it done. Let's do it. I don't wanna do it. I don't wanna raise rates. No one does. But I think we have the responsibility to run this at a, at a, at a, the right way.
But for the average person too, the, those, and I won't go on, but for the single woman or, or a hovel.
I understand.
Right there, the flat rate is gonna be four times the fifteen dollars. So right there in a year is a lot, without ever increasing the usage.
That's.
So you're knowingly voting against town charter because we're not, that, what, because we are not balancing our budget.
In the budget.
But now we've been in this for the last eight years, whatever, together and we have not balanced that. This is nothing new. This is nothing new.
So it's about.
We tried. We tried. Five years ago, we tried and we.
By raising it three percent.
No, it was supposed to be fifteen percent at the time.
Okay, by raising it twelve.
Yeah, and, and, and we.
But we were all in agreement on that too.
No, well, I agree with it because of the board voted that way.
Yes. We were.
This was before my time.
But it, yeah, it was before your time and, and before you, but it was basically, it was, at that time, was, we're fifteen percent back then. And we, we, we made it so be more palatable and help people and obviously to phase it. But we didn't phase in the last year and now we're still in the same problem where we are five years ago, but now worse. So let's, let's do what we're physically spa- responsible, supposed to be doing.
It's a different, a philosophy difference a little bit.
Possibly, yeah.
But, the, it's real, in terms of, of, of delaying this indefinitely, I don't know what the term, uh, it's not. It's just, it, we, we know when everything kicks in. We know what the flow of money is gonna be. We're trying to give people who are, who, um, are on the edge a little bit of a break and.
And then eight months from now, what's gonna exist?
One at a time, please try.
Excuse me. Excuse me, sorry. Go ahead, Fred.
Okay. Yeah, it's a deficit, you know, and we don't even know, um, exactly. When we talk about, you know, uh, is it imbalanced? Is it, we, we're not even sure. We have an estimate of, of whether this is gonna cover, but we don't know exactly what it is anyway. In other words, it could be, uh, it, it, it could be that that amount of money would, you know, is not gonna be quite enough. Or it could be that it's a little too much. We don't know that for sure. Or it might be ten percent too much.
It's not gonna be too much.
So, on ba- I, I look at it on balance. I look at, yeah, we're here to balance the budget, sure. We're also here to serve the people and try to, to mitigate, you know, mitigate situations that cause a hardship. And that's, that's basically the difference. I think, I, you know, I don't think there's that much hurt to the town if we have the deficit not addressed a hundred percent as, as you guys, you know, suggested.
No, we're not.
Versus, you know, the proposal, the, the, uh.
This doesn't fix the deficit. We're just trying to stop losing more money. So we're not even.
The deficit's not.
Oh, I think you were next.
Go ahead.
Uh, and basically, that's it. It's, we're, we're not talking about the deficit. We're talking about the running, the operating money we need. And it, what, and, and, and what difference, I know it's eight months, ten months down the line, we're gonna still be at the same number. So, uh, do you really think that's gonna make a difference? Why don't we just do it now, fix it? Start becoming financially responsible for our water and sewer and, and it's, it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. I mean, it's just the way it is. Electricity goes up, granted, your ta- your taxes are gonna have to go up. Everything goes up. That's just the way it is. It's not like there, anybody's making any money on this. No one's going on vacation or buying big equipment. This is just to stop the bleeding, to run the water and sewer. And to push it further down the line, it's not really helping these people because they're gonna have to pick it up at the other end. So all you're doing is delaying it and you're actually gonna make it worse for them.
And to Brian's point, who's not here tonight, his entire point at the last meeting was that we've been underbilling our customers for years now. And that what's really unfair, we also have, you have Mrs. Jones, but you have Mr. Jones who just moved to town and now he's gonna get saddled with an even bigger burden because someone else who moved in that, who lived in that house before him wasn't paying their fair share for water for years. And now Mr. Jones comes in, moves to town, and now he's saddled with that person's burden. And that's not fair either. And we need to keep that in mind too, because what you're proposing, although it suppo- like someday may fix the problem, eh, we don't know. We're trying to fix the problem now because we're aware of the problem now and fixing the problem is the right thing to do. And it's what we're here to do. It's what is said in the town charter. You can't just come up here and say, one day, you know, sometime in the future, we're gonna make everything right. That's not why we're here.
We're saying that. We're saying on this date, everything goes into, it's not someday in the future. It's, uh, it's exactly what's in here and the dates are there.
It's a date search.
So it's not way out. It's not.
But why, why push it out, Fred? Why push it out that long? I mean, for another year? I don't think it's gonna make that much of a difference.
And did you have a few calls?
Let's just do it now and get it right and start working for the future and getting this problem fixed. We're not even talking about the deficit. We're just talking about running, yeah. I mean, we still gotta deal with that. And I, hopefully, we do it aggressive and, and Susan said, we're working on that now to, and that money can be, you know, used to buy down the deficit. But why go further in, in deficit or, or even cha- it's that? We, we got the, the problem. Let's, let's just do it.
And I, I'd also like to see in, you know, typed up what, what you're proposing because I, I don't really know. You've read the date, you've read it, but, you know, I, I, it would've been really helpful as far as transparency and what we've talked about in town for a while now.
I did make a copy of what I, what you asked me for.
There's, or, you know, you email us all this stuff, yet you, you didn't put this on in email?
I'm sorry. I have a copy.
Yeah, I have a copy.
I think it was, I think it was very misleading not to inform the board of this prior to this meeting.
Fred, did you have your?
Here's a, here's a copy.
Um, do we wanna give anyone some raises while we're here too?
Sure.
Why don't you say?
Well.
No, hold on. Just being facetious.
I, I, as I said, I, I, I don't think that what we're doing is anything other than trying to help people a little bit. I know there's a philosophical difference. I don't call it kicking the can down the road.
That's what it is.
I call it, uh, a phased in, a phase in.
We're not here. The phases aren't on this page. The top.
Where, where, where are the phases?
Everything is a July first.
This, it's, this is just handwriting on the side of the paper.
Right, yeah.
Like, how can, how can this be considered anything?
An amendment can be handwriting on the side. It doesn't have to be, but, yeah. Ideally, I, I would, you know, should've gotten you a copy before. I take, I take responsibility, but it's pretty, there's not a lot of substantial.
It's kinda like trying to sink something by us. It's really not life.
I under- I understand what Freddie turned to. I understand that and everybody really, I know you're trying to mitigate the hurt, but you, we can't, because if you do that, you're just gonna hurt bigger later down. We have an infection. Clear the infection up. If you let it fester, it's gonna be bigger by the time we, we look at it. Now, let's just, we, we, we did do some, uh, lowering it from the, the flat rate. We dropped it five bucks. I mean, we tried to make that more palatable.
Can you raise the per hundred cubic feet?
Yeah, let's try to make it work a little better for other people, but we need that. It's just, to do this is not really helping anybody. It's hurting people.
I know it's a, yeah. I, I, I know it's a philosophical, but I just feel strongly about it and I, I wanna move the question.
I'd like to have free water too, Fred. Anybody would.
Wait, no, but can we, before we vote on it, can we actually?
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
What's the, I'm sorry.
Before.
I'll, I'll read it.
Would you read it, please, Fred?
All right. The motion is to phase in, um, the water usage rates, sewage uses, usage rates, uh, in the following manner. The water usage rate as of July one, uh, two thousand sixteen would be four dollars and twenty-five cents. The water usage rate as of, um, April first, two thousand sixteen is four dollars and sixty-two cents, which is exactly the same as the numbers you have on the, uh, notice, the notice for this evening. The sewage usage rate will be, uh, as of January first, five dollars and fifty-two cents. As of April first, two thousand and sixteen, uh, six dollars and eight cents. All other changes go into effect July first, two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second to the motion? Sorry. Seconded by Kathy. Further discussion.
No. This, would've been nice to know this before coming to this meeting tonight.
I accept responsibility. I should've, I should've gotten.
It would've been nice to have it typed up at least. We, I mean, we don't even, this is, this is something that I would've liked, um, Brian, who at the last meeting voiced his opposition for your proposal as well, um, I would've liked to hear his opinion on it. I, you know, I really think that, um, at the last meeting, we voted to put this forward and it was a vote, um, what, four to, four to two? That, um, to adopt it as is. And now, just a couple of weeks later, uh, without the full board's knowledge, you, you've changed the rules and kinda circumvented what we discussed and then kind of intervened here and actually are, in effect, creating more of a deficit to our over six hundred thousand dollar deficit. And you are creating a bigger deficit and you're here to propose to create a bigger deficit when we've been kicking a can down the road for over a decade. And the fa- I know there's lots of people that are in hard times and it, but if we do our job, if we fix it tonight, then those people might not have to be always in a hard time because we can actually help them down the road because they know what to expect from us. Not this. What we're giving them is irresponsible. We're giving them a bigger burden down the road and we're not keeping in line with town charter, which states that we should balance the budget and to knowingly not do that is irresponsible and, um, and disappointing.
As we said, um, earlier tonight, when our auditors were here, um, we do have a plan for addressing the deficit. I accept that this is a plan. Um, and in terms of the numbers that are presented for the rates, they remain the same. It's simply a phase in over one year, I believe it is. Um, for the numbers that are presented, the numbers have not changed. The rates will increase to the amounts that were presented. It is a matter of, um, giving a little bit of extra time for our customers and for them to be, um, phased in for these rates. It's a common, um, mechanism to try to help mitigate the impact of a large increase. And this is a large increase that is necessary for our.
For our residents.
Yep.
And our residents. Are you ready for the question? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Two noes, four yeses. Motion, please. I think we're up to the monthly budget report, which you have presented to you.
Excuse me, Susan.
I'm sorry.
Before people leave, can we have possibly public, can we move up our public comment now so, on this, so everybody could see where we were at?
Agenda is established.
I know, so we've changed the agenda before. Can we just move?
I'll ask the rest of the board. What would you like?
Would you like to hear from the public here?
Doesn't matter, Carl. Fred?
Can you move the public comment now so people here can speak if they want on what we just did? I would like to see that instead of just d- doing it done and gone. We have people here who possibly want to speak up.
Well, I will say that public comment is three, like, maybe three or four minutes away. Cause I don't think Tom has much on the monthly budget report. We can, there's nothing, any substance?
Well, it's probably fresh in everybody's mind, maybe.
Just, just a minute, Carl, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that we need to have a budget report, Tom, unless you had some things you wanted to give to us.
The, uh, no, the budget is, uh, there for you to review.
Reports are here.
As they're coming in, as they are expenditure. The only place you guys are probably interested in is, is a, um, uh, snow removal, your twenty-three o- twenty-three thousand in the hole on overtime and you're right around breakeven on the supplies, on material.
Thank you, Tom. And i- if you review your reports and you have some questions, please contact Tom. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Are there any appointments to board? Are there any appointments to boards and commissions? No? Thank you. There is one refund of excess payment. Kathy?
Yeah. I move refund $67.22 to Linda Ralph.
Is there a second? Seconded by Howard. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carried. Status reports? Just a brief report on the sidewalk committee, Fred?
Yeah, we have a brief meeting and agreed that one of the things we wanna do is to take a, in April, second week in April, I believe, or third week in April, to the selectmen on that subcommittee are gonna take a walk around some of the areas of town to determine whether, more or less assessed sidewalk condition. And also, we know that there are some other folks in town who have some expertise and have been, either they're walkers, or there's a couple of formal groups that can give us something, but if we so ask them.
Thank you. Public comment. Dick?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm disappointed in the actions that you're taking. And that you're asking the people that have their wells and septic systems to subsidize the shortfall in the water department. This has happened for years, and those people out there that own wells and septic systems that are just as poor as those people that are on the sewer and water system, and they have been subsidizing the sewer and water deficit for years, and they're normally gonna let it continue. The deficit now is over $600,000. By the time this year is out, conceivably could be over $800,000. And I'm just very disappointed in what happened tonight, that you could've done a total correction in the deficit and chose not to do it.
Thank you. Public comment? Shirley? That's true. Sorry, Shirley's next. Give your name, Shirley.
Shirley Olson, Russell Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not gonna get into the discussion in relation to the rates. I wrote what I felt about them in the River East. They're there, okay? So, that. But there has to be something done in relation to collecting unpaid debts more aggressively, really more aggressively. If that means looking at the situation and coming up with another plan to do it, do it. Business doesn't run this way. If you have outstanding bills, Kathy, you know this, you're a manager in a company, if you have outstanding bills, you go after them. All the people living out of town that have renters here, if they're living outside the state of Connecticut, go after them aggressively.
We are, and as I mentioned earlier tonight, there is a specific plan that we are continuing to execute, and we will, and we will continue the plan that we have. I mentioned that there is a, and this takes time, because we do have to have a plan in place, which we do, for the tax sale that will occur this spring. And there is another one that our collector of revenue is working on for the following season, based on how much is collected first time and what is remaining. So, yes, we do.
You have a plan, but it's not aggressive enough. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shirley.
John Dawson, Senator Collins. Regarding that, actually, and collecting of past due bills, once this increase goes into effect, I believe you're gonna seal the law for it, because people are gonna be behind it. So, I don't see how this is eventually going to catch up to everything that you guys want to do. I would like to see that happen, but I also see that it's just an incredible increase, a little very, very short period of time. It's gonna kill some of us.
Well, there may be a need to revisit the administration and the legislature.
Well, on top of that, I mean, I get that things haven't been done for a very long period of time, and you guys wanna follow your charter. You just can't keep going back to what hasn't happened. You have to deal with it now, like they say. But I tend to acknowledge this, honestly, just on a sliding scale, make it work a little bit easier for some of us.
Thank you. Yes.
Mitch Gilgit and Al Court, here in Portland. I'm disappointed in that we have a $600,000 deficit, and that that should be our priority of how did we get there? And the reason we got there is because we never charged the people the right amount of money for the services that people were getting. You just voted on the same thing. So, the four of you just voted to continually increase the money that people are gonna owe tomorrow. Now, I hope it didn't have anything to do, but if we did increase the bills now, it would show up before this term's election. And who would get blamed for this very large increase in our water and sewer bill? Somebody has to take responsibility for what's happened. And it seems to me there's people here that have been here, like Carl mentioned, and you've been here at least five years and...
Eight.
Eight, discussing this. I know Carl would be responsible, but you folks have to be responsible for what you've done to that little old lady that got, didn't even get $20 a month increase in her social security. She got less than that, and we're gonna increase her water bill, but what she got in her social security increase, that doesn't count electricity and everything else. I'm disappointed that we aren't standing up for what our responsibilities are. We pay our bills, divide, use X amount of services, I pay for them. This is how things should've happened. But we've let this go on, and we're in, okay, we don't wanna increase this. That's a good, warm, fuzzy feeling, but you gotta pay for what you use someday. It all comes up. Your dues come up, and they're gonna come up, and they're gonna be bigger. So, what are you gonna say the next year? You know, the next time we vote on this, 2016? Maybe we'll be voting, hopefully we'll be voting. Is it, are you gonna push it a little bit? Cut that increase in half again? Yeah, why not? But by then, I don't know what the, it'll be $116,000, $600,000 today. By the end of the year, it could be, as someone said, $800,000? What's it gonna be by 20 July of 2016? We haven't touched it. Our businessman. What's the interest in a growth on...
I don't expect that he'll be able to answer all these questions.
Well, we should've thought of that, 'cause we don't know exactly how much that kicking it down the road is gonna cost us. That's what I'm disappointed. We should've phased up our responsibilities now, passed it. Yeah, it's gonna hurt a lot of people. That's the way it is. And you folks are the ones responsible for this hurting so many people, 'cause you kicked the can down the road.
Thank you. You have a comment? Yes, Tom?
Norm Ward, Mr. Paul Aykroyd. I strongly agree with the comment I heard tonight, that we have to be a lot more diligent on our delinquent collections, speaking as a water and sewer commission. I'm always a pain in the butt on that commission concerning our delinquencies, asking time for a report, which we get. We're told on our commission that we're doing well on our collections. So, if we're doing well on our collections, how are we gonna make up all this great money that supposedly we're doing well already? And hopefully, we're not gonna hear we don't have the staff to do it, to devote the time. We've heard that we can't afford to put liens on the property more than once a year, because it's a very costly procedure. We have steps we have to go... Of course we do. But if we're not diligent, why should they pay the bill? We have to protect our asset. Not lien to me on the property, but that's our asset as a town. So, to hear that, well, it's a costly procedure, we can't do it, like I was told, we can't do it more than once a year.
We were told by...
We don't do it once a year. You do every May.
Right. Which is what our legal counsel advised us.
Yeah, that's the most...
We're following what is legally appropriate and deftly checked it out.
The word we heard tonight, we have to be more aggressive. We can lien every quarter. We can lien every three... We don't have to just lien once a year. Maybe that's enough to cover us.
Just to repeat, 'cause I wanna be sure that you're saying what's correct, is that our legal counsel, Martha Colina, gave information to the town, and we are following the advice, which is the appropriate placement of liens at the appropriate times based on the law. That's all I can say.
How does...
Pullman and Conley, excuse me.
How does another municipality lien every quarter? Other municipality lien?
I'm not familiar with other municipalities. I only know what is appropriate, given what Pullman and Conley, which is a well-known law firm, that assists the town.
What was the justification why we could only lien once a year?
Because that's the way the laws are written.
It's a law. Now, all right, fine, that's my answer. I have to check that, then. I don't think the law only allows us to put a lien on a delinquent customer once a year. I think, I mean, that's my feeling.
I think efficient use of this way of leaning, because you have a large, you have a general fund expense as well as a water and sewer department expense if you're to do it multiple times, so it's an excessive burden to your water and sewer customer to lien multiple times and charge them multiple lien fees when you can charge them one, and it will have the same effect. I think that the leaning, the leaning, how we made our leaning is very strong, it's done every May, and it's very helpful in collection. That's why, that's why the relevancy of collection, why we wanna have people who pay, but in the lieu of not, we have a lien, and we have an eighteen and a half, we have an eighteen percent interest rate that we're getting from the people. So, we do push hard on collection, but we're getting eighteen percent if you're not paying, and we got your property lien, and we can tax it or else, but we need to. So, you know, those are the reasons why we have those in there, for that purpose, and for our collection.
Thank you, Tom.
And we only get an eighteen percent delinquent rate if we collect, and if we don't negotiate.
We never negotiate. No, we never negotiate. Those dollars are owed to the town.
From my experience, placing a lien on a property doesn't bring in collections. It's the protection in case that piece of property goes up for sale, that the new owner is aware that this is outstanding amount due on that property. People that are delinquent, I don't care if I can't pay my bills and I'm delinquent. I don't care if I got one lien, theory wise, two liens or three liens. That lien ain't gonna hurt me. That lien doesn't make me pay my bill. An eighteen percent interest rate might make me pay my bill. Or if we're more aggressive, contacting me, trying to set me up with a payment plan...
Those are all activities that do appear... Yes, we do.
I don't think, I think what I heard tonight, we have to be more aggressive on that. And I don't think we...
And as I mentioned earlier, there is a specific plan that we are proceeding with, and we are collecting. You know, there's due process that we must follow, and that is what we do, and we will continue to follow the laws of the state of Connecticut and follow due process and the appropriate collection of fees and taxes. We follow the laws.
Yes, I strongly urge, I hope we always follow the law. I mean, that'd be pretty bad if you say here, if they say, "We're not gonna follow the law of the late." And I don't think that's what I'm trying to break out tonight. I'm not asking us to break the law and do things abstract. That's definitely not what I'm trying to, so I don't wanna lose it in that way. I'm definitely not advocating less break... Am I being childish?
No, I'm just... No, I'm just thanking you for what you're saying. Continue.
I do think, I've been working hard on water and sewer commission on our delinquency collections. I do think, from what I can gather, my own, I talk from my own personal feeling, we have to be, we have to be more aggressive. Nothing is more aggressive than if you come out and you hear in the paper, "Oh, my buddy got shut off for a delinquent bill." Oh, boy, I better make a payment on my bill, 'cause I don't wanna be shut off. And as long as I'm making a payment, special, you probably won't be shut off. So, I paid my $5 a week, but I'm not gonna do anything unless I have to. Nobody's gonna volunteer to come and say, "I'm gonna give you $10 a week on a payment plan if I don't have to." I mean, look at our agent on our delinquent collections. Some of the things I've seen on our collections, the agent on that is horrendous. And you surely don't feel, you don't think I feel sorry for a rental piece of property with a landlord? If he's in business renting property, you think I'm gonna be sorry for him if he can't pay his bill and he's collecting rent? I have no, I'm not sorry for that landlord one bit. To the problem, I don't even think, we can shut off half of these tenants anyways. But I'm just saying, we do have to be more aggressive. But I like to avoid this from that, yearly, you can only lien once a year. I'm not sure that that is legal, but I just can't, something tells me that's not... No. Thank you.
Yes, Kathy?
Yeah. Ken Grunt, River Sessi. As I said before, my wife and I are a fixed income, and this is gonna be a pretty big schedule over the course of the year. But, you know, I live in Portland, I wanna stay in Portland, it's a good town. And I think, despite both sides, I agree a little bit of everything, but we're moving in the right direction. It sounds like we haven't done that in the last five years. So, finally, we're moving in the right direction. And I do think we gotta come back next year and look at the progress or lack of progress, depending on what we do tonight. There's a lot of people in Portland who are elderly, who don't have a lot of money, breaking it up in the six months a year segment, not inherently about it, and we're gonna get the money, and people are gonna pay a lot more. I'm gonna pay a lot more. I might have to go back to work, but that might be a personal choice as well. But I think we're in the, we're going in the right direction, and I think that's the important thing. We haven't done it, as you guys told me, in the last five years. Now, we're at the right place, and this is a good thing.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That's that. We'll move on to the next item, which is Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. I did have a couple of announcements that I wanted the selectmen and the audience to be aware. The Waverly Center, which is our senior center, they are having their annual Spirit of Portland reception on March 22nd from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There'll be three individuals honored for their volunteerism this year, and we're very proud of the three individuals. I need to try to remember them. Did you have them written? I think I wrote them down. Hope I wrote them down. Diane Burgess, Buddy Hernandez, and Carlotta Lord. And that is March 22nd from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Waverly Center, which is 7 Waverly Avenue in Portland. I also wanted to point out that there's an email that came to us, and it was also on Channel 30, that there is a site that has ranked top tens in top... Channel thirty, that, um, there is a site that has ranked top tens in top ten towns for young families in Connecticut and they mention such things as, um, home affordability, growth and prosperity pertaining to average family income, family friendliness and quality of education. And the towns that were ranked by this particular group were Simsbury, Trumbull, Kensington, Glastonbury, Orange, Weathersfield, Newington, Winstead, coming in at number nine, Portland, and North Haven is number ten. So, um, that's positive publicity and I'd like to say thank you to the residents of our town for their volunteerism and for making us a family friendly. And I have nothing to add to the follow-up items for tonight and I would ask that there be a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of police security matters. And we have Lieutenant Malardo and Sergeant Cunningham, who will be visiting with the selectmen tonight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Carl, seconded by Kathy and it's nine, oh, seven. Yeah.